Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you stand and recite the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff. Absent. Alderman Mayor. Alderman Mayor, wow. Mayor Bowman. Geez.
Present, thank you, Daniel. We do have a quorum. I don't, how do you follow that? We don't have any ceremonial matters this evening. I want to thank the Aldermen that are attending remotely. And may we, do we have any agenda request forms, Mr. Ratliff?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. And I'd like to ask you at this point to please silence your cell phones if you haven't already done so. So the first item is the minutes of the regular meeting, July the 6th of the Board of Aldermen. You all had those printed in your packet. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Miller, Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the regular meeting, the Board of Aldermen stand approved as read. Then moving on to the work session of July the 6th. Again, you've had those printed in your packet, so I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Did we get Alderman Mills? I apologize for stepping on you there.
Aye.
Thank you. So those minutes also stand approved as read. Moving on to the agenda items, the first is Council Bill 60.
Council Bill 60 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a road use and maintenance agreement by and between Cass County, Missouri, and the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, for the sake of Council Bill 60.
Good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Good evening. This is an agreement that I brought to you earlier this year. And it was approved. And I've been back to Cass County Commissioners more than once. They keep saying no to me, but they tell me they're going to approve this agreement. What has changed is previously, we were going to bore East 275th Street for a short stretch of the alignment. After considerable discussions with all the property owners, it became quite evident that nobody wants this pipeline in their front yard. Absolutely nobody. And we thought, why don't we just put it in the road to begin with? Cass County has told me they will, they will approve this agreement to let us have the pipeline in the road. And we think if we put the pipeline in there and we backfill it with, with some gravel, and then we let traffic, you know, run over it for a few months, that's going to compact it all down, and then we'll put, put the road back the way it is. I call it crap and seal, but it's chip and seal. So that's our plan. And in the agreement, really the only thing that's changed, I added a couple of words, open cut in addition to boring. So that is the only change in this agreement. And we are hopeful that you will approve that tonight, so we can get it signed tonight and run it up to the courthouse tomorrow morning, so I can be on the docket this Thursday. And if the correct Cass County Commissioners are there, it's going to pass.
Excellent.
And I did include the updated alignment drawings and the previous alignment. Gives you a little more detail, kind of gives you who the players are. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Brooks or Mr. Ratliff, either one?
Mayor, I do.
Alderman Milner?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding as well as everybody else. So we are not going through any residential property. We are going through the road.
We are going through one property, and it's not really considered residential. It's light industrial and commercial, and the property owner does not live there and doesn't even live in the state.
Okay. So we have no complaint about going through that property?
I haven't spoke with the lady who was actively against it, and now she's delighted we're in the road. She tickled today.
Just, I wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Ratliff?
Carl, we probably, we'll need some, maybe possible temporary easement on some of the properties for construction.
Yes. Because the property owner's property line goes to the center of the road, you know, we're going to need temporary easement. And that, in some places, we're showing the drawings that have been made. And that's not the final temporary or final permanent, but that's just kind of what they were at the time. We think it's a little bit much for the temporary, so we're going to try to talk about that.
So then, if the members of the Board hear anything from any of the residents, the response should be, if I'm hearing you correctly, is there may be only a temporary interruption in the property as far as the easement goes? It would, nothing of permanent?
Right. I mean, we're not putting it outside of the road by the way.
Right.
We will, we're going to be basically in the center of westbound lane on East 275th and northbound lane on South River Plant.
Okay. Any other discussion questions from Alderman Franklin?
They are all aware of this, correct? They have been told this and they are. They're aware of it, okay.
Are there any questions from Alderman Mills or Alderman Zaring?
No, I'm good. Mr. Mills?
Okay.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Thank you. This is an ordinance then?
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move Council Bill 60 to a second reading.
Thank you, Alderman.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 60 and advance it to a second reading. May I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is absent.
Thank you. Second reading?
Council Bill 060 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a road use and maintenance agreement by and between Cass County, Missouri, and the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, second to Council Bill 060.
And a roll call again, please.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is absent.
Thank you. Council Bill 60 is approved and becomes ordinance 3554. Item B on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Good evening, Ben.
Good to be back in front of you in person.
It is good to see you in person.
As promised, we come back to you guys halfway through the year, a kind of review where we are as far as financial concern. And the information that I put in front of you tonight, that tonight perhaps are going to be through June 30, 2021. So what I want to do is just go through the revenues, the revenue highlights and expenses and then bunch of actual results. This is actually the same reservation you guys received in the first quarter. Obviously, we better made it, and it is, you guys see, quite a point two of. Just like last time, we let it say line revenues first, each of the nine funds are up on the screen. General Fund through the bond and interest fund, bond and interest fund, we have some debt flow out, so there's no, really no activity in that. Overall, the revenues in each one of those funds are up. General Fund is up around 24% from the second quarter, the same time period of 2020. Remember, 2020's sales tax, we thought June 30 was a bismol, and it didn't. It was actually pretty impressive from what we saw. Sales tax by itself is up 280,000, sort of June, so it's, it's still really strong. Electric's up 13%, versus 2020. Most of it, obviously, the charges for services, I'll touch on a little bit more on electric fund in a couple more slides later. If you combine Park, Quaggy, Community Center, revenues are up 40% from last year. Last year was kind of a, it was, we're not really a good comparison. Going back to 19, it's, it's actually up 13% from 19, which is a better comparison, more one to one comparison. So day passes, obviously, day passes, memberships are way compared to last. Ambulance fee and transporter down around 11% as far as the revenue. When you split that out citywide, revenues by type, you can obviously see the charges for services, the biggest one, we've got. The bottom one is the 2021, through June. It's that light green and the dark green is 220, 2020. So sales tax, you can see, bump up there. Charges for services, obviously, the big one. The bulk of those charges for services are, obviously, the electric one, being up around 640,000. Community Center by itself is up 105,000. So we're continuing to capture some of the polar vortex revenue as you guys have instructed. And it's, obviously, the sales taxes still up across the board. When you break down those charges for services, what do they include? The biggest one, obviously, is utilities. EMS and General Fund come in as the, in refuse, pretty much the bottom of the operating funds, charges. Citywide expenses, again, the nine funds, just like the revenues are up across the board, General Fund actually in this case is a good reason, there's good reason it's up. Capital's up, there's street construction. Last year, streets weren't, we couldn't do any of that, obviously. So the entire reason that that expense is up is it's for street construction. If you look at just the operating cost by itself, it's down compared to the same time last year. Electric's up, and the bulk of that is the purchased power that we talked about earlier this year. And water and sewer, the CWSS fund is up. That expense is really attributable to the franchise fee that we approved last year during budget. As far as expenses, where did they go? 16 and a half million dollars. Obviously, the big three, personnel services, the contractual, commodity state, pretty much, even the metals, around what it was in the first quarter as well. So those are, those are big, obviously, big cost items. As we see the capital projects come through for water, sewer, those are obviously, that obviously would be the game of amendments, and then have more than I was. New, this quarter, included revenues versus expenses slide, anybody sitting here realizing how a budget up here. On the left, light green is the revenues, and dark green is the, is the expense. And give you all the revenue expense, I want to, until you actually see them together, really don't know whether to put the hell to those funds or not. General Fund revenues are up, just a little bit higher than the expense, and we expect to see that throughout the year because of the nature of revenues. A lot of your, bulk of your revenues are comparable, like sales tax. And street construction is also included in some of that expense. Electric, you can see, obviously, the expense is up. In, in this case, there is a deficit or deposit up here. Remember, the new voice was over a million dollars, you guys were debating. We're at 700,000, just over 700,000 in debt. So that means you're gaining ground, just as we expected here, and more than likely too, getting here. So I would say the electric fund is really strong, it's operating just like the public. CWSS is, is, again, a small positive here. We should see expenses go up, obviously, as those three big projects take place. And remember, the COPs ratio last year, so that's still just 2 million dollars in capital in that part. So it's, it's doing just as well as, as the general fund when it comes to operations. So overall, we look at the budget from a budget scenario, from a comparison of last year scenario, as well as comparing revenues to expenses. And when we consolidated a lot of this data, I was actually surprised to see how well we are doing. And part of that is because of sales tax, and that's what this slide, when they direct your attention to the graph on the very far right. And it, and it doesn't say 144% up, it actually says 44%. Forty-four percent cumulative for the year in sales tax, it's just in the general fund. Curious to see how that's going to play out this next quarter. When we look at the top 10 retailers, just like last year, the strong part was, was folks that are either furnishing their house or, or working on outdoor projects, those type of stores are still the ones strong. Like they're having better years than they did actually. So we see that. Restaurants are starting to pick up, obviously, have people come out of their house and start eating out. We put our own money in the pot, quite a difference by we. But we see that, we see that within the general fund, the sales tax. Public safety sales tax, there's, for some reason, the state, there's a lag, one whole month lag in public safety sales tax than there is to the regular sales tax. Even so, it's keeping up, just with sales tax by itself. So this is the bulk of the reason that it's happening. The top 10 sales tax producers, I understand, like, the public know who they are, but in this case, they really establish how our economy is doing compared to other years. In this case, the gray bar is 2021, and the dark bar is 19. Compare those two together, you've got, you've got a pretty big comparison. Again, 2020 was a non, right? So each one of these months, as far as sales tax is concerned, are, 2021 was home early. It was increased over 2019, as far as collections is concerned. The next one is the cumulative of those two. And you can kind of see where those percentages are. For 2021, we're up 8% over, just these top 10, 8% over 2020, and 17% over 19, 2019. So sales tax is really strong. And I know you guys have, if I remember, around 150 pages of financials. I want to make sure, as we go into the fall, you've got what you need as far as information. What I've done here is put together kind of a calendar with Jeremy Kim and Brad's help, just as a draft calendar, what the budget process type of like this fall, taking into account how we should comment, so we received that you guys last year. I wanted to make sure you get time to department. Now, you went through swot analysis, and I've been tracking through some of those, and you've got some really good presentations from your departments. Obviously, tonight, we get the mid-year results. We were going to bring to you the mid-year amendments for July 1, budget amendments, and most all of them are capital, but there are just a few items that we want to button up before we get it, so we'll be back on the second to do that, again, a little few of those. August 16th, we'll do the budget question there in five. I think we did some of that last year. Go through budget, board priorities, what you want to see as part of the board budget. August is going to be spent, for us, mostly on capital. We're going to be asking the departments to adjust or edit the capital sheet that we got, that shows all the projects. That way, we can get that in front of you and ready to go when we need it September. So September 20th is going to be, obviously, the third quarter will be, no, yeah, no, third quarter, not. I'll have August numbers, so that'll give me enough to do a 2022 forecast, the first forecast for 2022, based on what we see so far. So we give the budget to the board, the 20th of September, as well as the capital projects placed. Spend most of October in work sessions, and November, do the same, to go through as much as we want. And then splitting the budget adoption, the first reading, the second meeting, the two different meetings, like we wanted to do last year, that happened, but this year with that, it's going to be. So draw your attention to anything in October and November in the draft, is the workshops. And I've tagged on the current meetings, there's no special meetings, it's part of this process, if we need them, obviously, we can set that up. That is all I've got for you tonight, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
I'm very pleased, that's a good report. And I like the fact, I liked how you compared it to 2019, to get a really true picture.
Or see, but at least, and I knew this for a few entities that are around, up like Harrisonville, a few miles outside of the central unit city, and we're seeing the same thing. A lot of movement took places like Harrisonville, the building, you've probably seen the building progress increasing, just like the sales tax. You see that, it's consistent throughout that same range of, and it's, it's incredibly steep. I don't give you the story before, where we tried to buy a house in Harrisonville, every time we tried to do that, it got taken out from under, somebody else bought it before we had that. But that's, that's good to see.
Well, at the rate the new homes are being built in Harrisonville, try us again.
We've got five years, coming back.
Any questions for Ben? I like the schedule for budget discussions, too. As much as we can make those through the work sessions without extra meetings, that would be great. The board would appreciate that.
Ask, is the board okay with that schedule?
Yes, and is the board okay with that schedule?
I think it looks good.
It looks like you have lots of opportunities to have input under the budget. Okay.
It's not crammed.
I'm sorry?
It's not crammed up, so I mean.
Right, right. Yeah. So thank you to Jeremy and Kim and Courtney and the finance people, and thank you for the expertise that you bring to the city. I just appreciate so much what our finance people do. Thank you, Ben. I told you it was going to be a brief meeting tonight. This is to pay you back for all those hours and hours. All right, we'll move on to Aldermen and Committee reports. I'm going to go with the gentlemen that are on remote. Alderman Mills?
Yes. I did attend a, a deal on electric, Effigy Electric Company on their new meters, and the technology was quite impressive. So reading the minutes on Mr. Smith's work session last year, and the best time, and kind of fell into that category of, so I don't know where we are on meters and all that kind of business, but upgrading our technology, and you've got to spend money to save money, but it was impressive what electric meters can do today. Otherwise, just encouraging people to get their vaccinations, and if that, if that, if I can encourage somebody to get a shot, then get a shot. This thing's biting us again.
Yes.
That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Zaring?
Madam Mayor, Board, I have nothing. I appreciate it.
Safe travels. Are you, are you back on the road?
I am, I, I am back, and it's time to get back to normal now.
You're well rested.
Yep.
Okay. Alderman Reese?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Alderman Franklin?
Yes, I wanted to bring up August 8, or August 7, I'm sorry, is our 200-year bicentennial celebration on the square, what the Harrisonville Square is putting on a celebration. There's going to be lots to do for everybody, lots for the kiddos. We've got some bluegrass bands, we've got some acts during the day. We're going to have the farmer's market extended from 8:00 in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon. We are going to do the junk in the trunk, and it's going to be in the parking lot of the library. So there's going to be a little bit of something for everybody, so we hope that all you can come out and enjoy it, and I think it's going to be a good time. Also, on September the 18th, I believe, is our Paw Palooza. This will be the first time we've done this out at the park. It will be in conjunction with the dog park, and there will be a 3K walk, I believe. People are encouraged to bring their dogs out, and they will be on leashes, hopefully, and you can dress them up, and we will have food vendors and regular craft vendors out there. So more of that will be coming out on Facebook. We are going to be having a meeting tomorrow evening, the Dog Park Committee, to get that finalized, so other than that, I think that's all.
Lots of exciting things going on. Thank you. Alderman Milner?
I've got nothing.
Alderman Turner?
Nothing.
Okay. Alderman Davidson?
And nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
Milner? Yes, ma'am. I want to have to say one more thing. Certainly. I was remiss in not saying, we did go to the soccer alumni game this weekend, and Matt Turner was there, and our own Daniel Barnett was out there playing and running around the field, and my two sons came up and were out there, and it was a nice evening. There was a little rain delay, but I think everybody had a good time, and was well-run, and it was nice to see a lot of the kids coming back to enjoy playing the soccer again, so.
Wasn't there like 60 alumni that came for that?
I believe so. I believe so. So it was, it was a good evening, so.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Ratliff, your report?
Yes, ma'am. Just to remind everybody, August the 3rd is the valid initiative for the fire sales tax. We, if you need additional information, any other information, go to the city's website. We've dedicated a whole page to all the data. I think Daniel's got about seven pages worth of data on that, and I think it's well informative. And any questions that we get, we try to update any of that information, if it's something that we, you know, haven't thought of, and, and making sure that we get the information out. I'll briefly touch that the airport runway project is moving very fast, and, and part of that, great long discussion that you'll have probably at the next meeting, so, you know, when we have a, a brief meeting, the next one's usually longer, is the discussion about the airport and the opportunities that we maybe could take advantage of if we moved that project up, or we wouldn't have any matching funds as a, as an opportunity. So the, according to MoDOT, the FAA really wants Harrisonville to get your, get our runway completed, because they, was it 23 PSI is what the runway rated?
Twenty-three.
And anything under 40, they consider in bad shape. So once it hits 40 in PSI, they think it's bad. We're at 23. So you can see why the FAA is not really happy that we haven't gotten to it yet, and we're trying to make sure that we maximize our opportunities.
And keep the airport open.
Right. And I read that information to you all at the last meeting about the economic impact the airport provides, and so it's well worth the investment. The outdoor pool is continuing to move forward. Some of the discussion that we, we've also received along that matter is, you know, again, to explain the reason that we are on this schedule is essentially because, when we found out the problem, that it wasn't budgeted, we didn't, weren't aware of it, and then by the time that we were able to put the COPs together to address it, and then the short-term loan to be able to maximize it, is in November. And so then we were hopeful to do late summer, and have it open, but the contractor we were working with couldn't do the performance bonds, and we had to send it out for RFP, because we're not going to move forward if somebody can't do performance bonds. So that's tracking along very well, and we're, we're hoping in August to start seeing some actual movement and, and things happening there. The same thing with the Lake Luna project, as well as the South project. I don't know if we've officially named it yet, we'll probably talk to you all about officially naming that area down there in the south. Right now, we've given it all kinds of different names, but we'll probably bring it to you all to have a official name for it. Trash. So as you all know, you all approved the contract, and the current hauler is still picking up. So as you all know, you all approved the contract, and the current hauler is still picking up. We're still getting complaints, things aren't being picked up. We're still contacting him, and he's responding to those. We also have gotten complaints about shirtless people that are picking up the trash and all those kind of things, and so we are aware of it, and we don't like it, but we're, we want them to get the trash picked up. It's not, you know, the best situation to be in when you've got a company that's going bankrupt in the process. The GFL WCA has begun the process of mobilizing their carts. So we know, we were concerned about the carts. They have gotten the carts, and they're using, they're going to use North Park as the staging ground to be able to start getting out those carts. You probably got, if you're on Nixle, you got notified today. It's also went out on all our social media, because we want to make sure people understand, don't use the new carts until August 2nd, because the contract's not up until August 1st with municipal waste. And as you all know, when it was discussed, GFL WCA does not really want to ever use their cans. I'm sure municipal waste feels the same way about using GFL's cans as well. And so we're going to continue to put that information out, and any opportunity you have to put that information out is to tell everyone, you know, yes, we're liking that we're getting the new cans, but don't use it till the 2nd of August, because that's when our contract is essentially effective with GFL. And I know it's going to be confusing for some, and it's going to be tempting in the process, but we wanted, as they did, and we wanted, we wanted them to make sure they had the carts out by the time the contract was effective. And so that is happening. We'll continue to put information out as much as we can along the process, and any ideas you have further on that, we'll be happy to do that. Ben mentioned a little bit, and I want to kind of capitalize on your all's forward-thinking to get the community center into this place. If you all recall, the interest rate, you took advantage of it to advance forward the repairs at the community center and the improvements that are happening. As a result of that, as Ben was reporting to you, it was up in comparison of 40% from last year, but if you took it from 2019, of over 14%. And one of the caveats of that is, you do have a park director that's very active about generating revenue and finding any additional revenues to generate, but additionally, over the past, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, after the new machines were inputted with the flooring and the improvements in the workout area, it was a big buzz on Facebook about all the new equipment out there. And on Monday, following that weekend, Grant said that, his staff at the front desk said they had every 45 minutes, new membership coming in and signing up for family memberships, single memberships, and as a result of that investment. And so you guys are a big contributor to the revenues that are going up, because you advanced forward the improvements for the community center to happen. And Grant says it's like Christmas every day. And so it's a good thing. Another thing, an historical marker started to come down today. The old, old hospital on Pearl Street, the demolition started today. Most of it is down. We have told everyone, please don't go and try to find something in it in the process. But that is a direct result, the city not having to pay for it, and the codes department with Chris and Katie, working with that property owner, and then the municipal court enforcing that to be able to have that taken down. So it's a, you know, it's a historical marker. A lot of people that are still in Harrisonville were born there, and so it's sentimental in that matter, but you also know it became a dangerous building in the process. And thank you, Daniel, for correcting people that the other hospital, old hospital, doesn't belong to the city, because we've been dealing with that as well. And I just got a comment from Chris that in your next week's report, you'll see that the new property owner at 1302, 1304 Commercial, South Commercial, will be demoing that building on their own the first week of August. And so that'll be, again, another property the codes department's been working with, and as a result, that's happened.
Which building is that?
Be next, right next to the Santa Fe Glass area, that building over next to them. And then you all seen the 13 questions that went out for the historical courthouse square preservation. Please fill that out as you get opportunity to do that, because, you know, it's very important to us to have that information. And then you'll also be seeing here fairly soon, the questionnaire that'll be going out. Mayor signed off on the letter last week, and it'll be a cover letter going out to citizens for the questionnaire that you all approved last month to go out to the residents. And so they will be doing that via technology side, as well as mailing out, and as well as, if they don't get the response they want, they'll even make phone calls to get that data. So that'll be good data that we hope to have for you all by around September, so that we can be able to utilize that for a part of the budget process and have the information for that. And I'll end with that, over the next, probably the next month, you'll be hearing in nauseam from Jim Clark about a rail spur that we own, and that we have to get agreements done with the railroad, and probably administer an admin fee and a use fee to essentially make sure that the citizens are not paying for a spur that is being used by one company, and that that company will be contributing to the maintenance of that spur. So with that, and I'll leave you in suspense on all that great information.
Can I ask a question, or can I go back to the runway of the airport? I know you talked about both, and we might have to, there might be a match, and there might not be. Can you explain a little bit more about that, as far as if we did have to match? I can't remember what the amount was and the difference.
Yeah, so 4.65 is what they offered. Essentially, it was 10% would be our match. MoDOT then said that they had a 50/50, and that they would offer that 50/50, and then our match would be 5%. And that's where we were at, is 5% of the 4.65, which roughly is around 235,000, would be the match for 4.65. Here in the past couple of weeks, MoDOT has reached out to the city and said that if we could somehow move this quicker, instead of waiting out till 2024 and get it closer to 2022, then there would maybe be an opportunity that could guarantee it, but a possible opportunity that there would not be any match that would be needed. But for us to do that, we would have to advance forward the engineering and to do those type of work. So we would essentially, and that's what we talked about during the amendment, budget amendment process, is do we go ahead and expend the funds to do the engineering to essentially have that reimbursed to us and have no matching funds as a part of that.
What was the amount of engineering?
Huh?
What's the amount of engineering?
Well, that was the 4.65, man.
It's 10%. Right around 465.
Okay, so. But for this fiscal year, it wouldn't be that much. Yeah.
Okay. So we may have to come up with 460, but very good possibility, excuse me, there's a possibility we could get all of that refunded, either 5% or half of that, or all of it refunded, just depending on.
Right.
How, if we decide to vote on this, how soon do we know if we're going to get 5% of, half of it back or all of it back? Really, is there any?
I would hope, I would hope next fiscal year, because that's when they want us to try to be ready for us by 2022, is from what I understand, is that we have everything submitted to them by them in 2022.
Their funding starts around October.
Right. They, you know, the old saying, they like to see a little skin in the game, and then they see us have a little skin in the game, then they're willing to start moving funds toward it.
I'm skin in the game. I just, you know, if we're going to get something back, I'd kind of like to know where we stand as far as that. I don't, I don't know.
Well, essentially, if you have the 10%, and just say, you know, it's 10% for engineering, you'd have 10% for engineering no matter what. What we would do is look at what it would be, where we could possibly be for this year, because you're not going to expend all the 10% in this fiscal year. So what would be that number, and that's what Carl and Ted are working on, is what could be that number with an engineering firm for the remaining of the fiscal year? That would be a part of the budget amendment. The additional part of it would be something that we would have in the budget for approval for next year, but we would rather say, hey, it could pass all that at the beginning. The reimbursement would either be, the way I'm looking at it, is close to the 95% of that reimbursement, because we already got commitment that it's only be a 5% match. So you're looking at the minimum of 95 reimbursement. It's just that 5% that may not be reimbursed, or it may be completely reimbursed.
Okay, well, that, we're going to be, we're going to discuss them now before or after the tax initiative?
For?
The fire tax initiative, all about.
So the next meeting would be August the 2nd.
So, the day before then?
Any other questions of Mr. Ratliff? You have the municipal court report in your packet. Questions from the media? Nothing from Dennis? Okay. I have a couple of things. I want to thank the VFW Post 4409 for including me in a ceremony that occurred on Saturday, where we laid a wreath on the tomb of Sergeant Sterling Archibald Gault. He is buried at Orient Cemetery. He's a Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, and unfortunately, he has no family here nearby. He and his wife did not have any children, and his wife is deceased, so obviously deceased. But it was very nice of the VFW Post to recognize this gentleman and the fact that he was indeed a hero. I learned that in the Philippine insurrection, he actually swam across the river with a rope in his mouth, and then when he got to the shore, he tied that rope around a tree and enabled his fellow soldiers to cross the river and to escape the Philippine insurrectionists. So that was just a really amazing piece of history that I did not know prior to Saturday. So I was grateful to be able to be a participant in that. Town hall meeting. We had a great town hall meeting. I want to commend Chris Arthur and Katie Phelps for the job that they did in explaining the rental-ready program, and I want to thank Mr. Ratliff for the explanation that he gave of the Chapter 353 tax abatement program. It was a new audience. There were a lot of landlords there, and they were very interested. Mr. Ratliff brought a map. You remember the map that he drew, or that they showed us at the retreat of the designated area? People were very interested in how they can rehab their properties and receive an abatement for doing so. So I was very encouraged by that. I want to thank.
They want to make it bigger.
I want to thank Chief Hofer and his staff for being there also, and again, encouraging residents to participate in neighborhood watch programs. It takes all of us to build communities. So I was very pleased with that town hall meeting. And then lastly, as Alderman Mills has said, the COVID numbers are increasing. Chief Myler has shared with me that the numbers for today were 46, and that is a two-day total, but we are seeing somewhere between 20 and 30 new cases in Cass County every day. So the Delta variant is on the rise, and I would just encourage anyone who has not already been vaccinated to please consider doing so. And with that, I'm going to accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone else?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned, and we'll.